Can.
Who made the motion?
Kathy.
You had a second?
And I said, I seconded.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? Jan?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Jay? Jay? We'll come back to Jay. Mary Lou?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathleen? I think something's wrong. Why did Kathy say yes?
Uh, yeah, I said yes.
Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
And me, Bob. So we're on. We're legal.
Is Jay saying something? Someone says maybe he. Okay. Well, Rebecca is coming in now, so.
Okay, good.
We might as well.
We get for the minutes.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Hi.
Have the meeting. That's what I'm saying. I thought she was.
Hi Rebecca.
Hi Rebecca. Hi.
Busy lady.
Happy Wednesday.
You don't have to listen to me.
Bob Downey apologizes for the confusion.
Oh, no worries.
Well, I'm not worried. I just apologize.
I feel bad because the, 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 uh, running force took advantage.
I was just telling everyone earlier.
Starting for sex, so.
I, I think I, I overthought this whole process, thinking that, uh, you know, maybe it would be, you know, absolutely important that you walk through the space, but it turns out, you're more than familiar with our space, which is great news. Uh, wanna let me open the meeting by saying, uh, good mo- good evening, everyone. Uh, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the library staff, I want to welcome Rebecca Oldham, Town Administrator, to our trustees meeting. Uh, meeting purpose is to further the open communication, uh, between the library and the town of Groveland. Essentially, short-term objectives, midterm objectives, some of these will be ongoing, or if not all of them. Uh, growth and expansion possibilities, as well as prep for possible grant, uh, applications. Uh, meeting constraints are an ongoing challenge. Uh, le- leading to space allocations, possible and impossible, uh, possibilities. Hours of operations in this meeting. Uh, we are fortunate in, in Groveland that, uh, in the vernacular of the business world, we have a campus, uh, right in, uh, the local, uh, immediate footprint, we have the town hall, police station, fire station, and the library. And this effectively brings our community together. Uh, as such, we recognize that we are, uh, that we do, what we do as a library is part of the whole Groveland community and budgets matter. Uh, many thanks to Darcy for reaching out to the Massachusetts Library Service. Forever will be MLS, for those keeping track of acronyms, uh, in arranging the site visit conducted by Chris- Christie Shomen Farah and to Laurel for the detailed minutes that she provided for the visit. This opened up a whole new approach as to how a library functions in today's world. Uh, had we done this a month ago, I think we would be thinking a little differently about this, the whole process. Uh, not covered in our walkthroughs, two walkthroughs that, that we did, was outside building issues. We didn't talk about the roof. We didn't talk about the entrance, et cetera, et cetera. Electrical issues were not discussed, and I'm hoping that Rebecca could fill us in on those. Uh, the archival files were not specifically discussed, but they are a work in process. Uh, I would suggest that we use Laurel's notes and Christie's, uh, as talking points. However, the most immediate area that needs to be addressed, uh, the carpet replacement, furniture moves, and book stack move, and redesign. Uh, again, welcome Rebecca, and if you wanna jump in with, uh, an opening statement, that'd be great.
Yes, no, thank you. I, I really appreciate all of you inviting me here to speak with you. I had the pleasure of, uh, joining another one of your meetings that you had had remotely, and I really appreciated that as well. Really important, I think, to have that consistent, open dialogue in terms of what's happening. We are all a team here. We all work together. I know that I've been extremely fortunate to, to have a, a, a great team to work with, and Darcy is very much a part of that. Uh, she welcomes me into her office every time that I, I stop on by, even if it's to hide from all the things happening over at town hall. Um, so I'm forever grateful for Darcy, um, and all that she's been able to accomplish here in the library, and you all have a great staff here working for you. I know, working with Bergen on the art installment that we've had in town hall has been a blessing. It really has been a great opportunity to showcase some of the programs and everything that's happening here at the library. Um, again, I really don't ever want anybody to operate inside a bubble, and I think that it's just so beyond important to have these constant lines of communication open, and I am extremely grateful for, again, the opportunity to just talk with you and to keep those lines open, so that if I can ever be a resource or ever provide any additional information or anything of that nature, um, you always feel welcome to come see me and contact me. So, again, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I really am grateful.
Please come to.
Everyone, three single one. Before we really get into it, I just wanted to say, and this is a little, uh, this is off topic. Kathy, I muted your computer, so you can unmute your phone. Um, I pressed ask to unmute, um, just because your computer sound was a little wonky, so your phone should work better. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah, on the computer side, it was a little wonky. Alright, um. And then if you turn down the sound on your, um, computer, that'll work. Okay, so, yes, welcome. First, I wanna give you.
Your bubble, your echo from her computer.
That's okay. She did it prepared.
I mean, so. Okay. We had, um, like Bob said, Christie from the, the library system come in, um, on Thursday, and I wanted to give you the notes that she gave me, um, about kind of our redesign, um, our ideas. So you have that document. Um. So, yes, we should start talking about, do we have a timeline for the carpet? I know that's soon, but.
So there was no timeline established as of yet. We had originally gotten estimate from Elm Square flooring down in, um, Elm Square, uh, specifically to figure out exactly how much should be allocated for the particular project. They had come over, they had provided some estimates, and they had provided us a figure. Uh, that figure was part of our capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan was then approved by the Board of Selectmen and then approved by, uh, town meeting. Uh, the funding source for that particular project was through the American Rescue Fund, so those funds were readily available and still available for use. Uh, what that project didn't take into consideration is the moving of any furniture and any items as part of that. I know that we utilized town hall as a, um, example as to what we did over there, but unfortunately, over at, um, that particular location, we did a lot of the work ourselves. So a lot of the employees themselves, whether or not I'm supposed to admit that or not, uh, was the ones who moved the furniture, moved their desks, uh, moved bookshelves, things of that nature. I know it'd be public a little bit, but a lot of it was done by the employees themselves. We rented a hydraulic, uh, dolly, and that was then utilized. So, again, it was really done internally. We didn't have Highway do it. They were not going to participate in moving the furniture. Um, and we did not hire anybody to do it. So when thinking about the library, I don't think that was thought through in terms of putting, proposing the, the installation of the new carpet. So it wasn't something that was factored into the price. Uh, while I don't think that that eliminates the ability of the project to move forward, I think that I can find funding in order to, to make that happen as part of that project from some of the savings that we've seen from some of the other projects that we have. Um, that still does mean that we need to find a contractor who will perform that work. Um, and a lot of that's gonna, um, hang on the prevailing wage rates, because you need to pay prevailing wages for anything that you do in terms of town buildings. Um, so that does drive up the cost a little bit, and sometimes that does make it a little, um, not advantageous for a contractor to bid a project, because it's just not, uh, profitable for them. Um, so I think that's gonna be our biggest holdup, and we had mentioned that at a last meeting, and so, um, it's a good time to introduce you, as I'm sure you're already aware, of Steve McPherson. He is our, um, has recently been promoted to the facilities and, um, buildings supervisor position. So he will be taking on more of a management role in terms of our facilities here in town. Um, and that includes the library. So, um, with his new role, we sat down the other day, and we were trying to think of any companies that we were aware of that had done, who performed services like that. We couldn't think of any, so we engaged the building commissioner, who had done other projects, um, in his former uh, communities that he's worked in and currently worked in, and trying to get some names of some contractors to reach out to. So, once we get a contractor to come in and give us a price, then we'll have to figure out, one, are they on the state bid list? Two, do we need to go out to bid for what they're proposing based upon that cost? And then three, when can they do the work? So, all of that needs to happen before we move forward with the carpet, which then again, also needs to be bid, because while we got a price from Elm Square flooring, it's still subject to a procurement process due to the threshold under thirty days. So, it's a kind of a multi-phase approach, so I don't have an idea, like a, a definitive timeline as to when it will happen, but I know that we would like to, and, and Steve and I talked earlier today, take this meeting as an opportunity to identify what you're all expecting as well, so that we can then turn around and try and be as helpful as we possibly can. Because I know we recently received a grant, and I know we recently talked about potential expansion, and maybe not being something we can immediately attend to. I don't know what this is, uh, the minutes have reflected, but if there's an interim opportunity, and I even know I talked to Bergen briefly about this, for space and whatnot, if there is a way to utilize that process as a way to maybe reorganize the library and to suit more programming needs, or to suit some new programming that's in place that wasn't originally in place, because the library's changed in quite some time, and I'm not sure that anything has changed since the nineteen sixties, seventies. Um, yeah.
But, yeah.
So it would be nice to upgrade that altogether and give the library a brand-new, fresh look, um, that reflects all of the progress and improvements that the library has been making. So I guess the long-winded answer is I'm not entirely sure as to what would like your input and guidance.
So, what we learned last week is that there are library-specific movers, and is it okay if I send you two information about those particular contractors? They, I think, are part of MHEC or the state contract. So.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. Yes.
The library before, like, what I'm wondering is, like, takes a lot of hours to organize a one rack of books. And I could just see these guys, whoo, grabbing it and throwing it in a box.
Yeah.
Throwing it over.
Yeah, that's why, you know, we were fairly happy to learn that there are ones that work specifically with libraries.
Yeah, a little bit of comic relief. Uh, there was a recommendation that we asked patrons to take home twenty books. Uh, so they're empty.
Yes.
Then move them, and then have them move back. And of course, that's, that's impractical, but it was.
I mean, I think if we did that raffle contest, take home twenty, you get a raffle ticket, I think that would actually do well.
It's been done before.
Yeah.
Yes.
Take out a rack. This is twenty. And then all which is.
Don't return before this date. We'll, we'll.
That's twenty-four. Yeah, so I'll take out this.
Yeah.
One, one of the suggestions that kind of came up with our, uh, meeting with Christie was, uh, in the future, down the road, uh, we get things on wheels. So, just for an example, if, uh, shelving was all on wheels and movable, this would not be an issue. So going forward, you know, we may wanna seriously consider that. Not part of this effort, because that's, that's, it's an expense that I don't think we can incur. But, uh, that's, that, that's the, the restriction we have now. The bookcase shelves are heavy. You have to take the books out, and you have to put them back in the same order, or we have trouble.
We do have one, uh, large movable unit, uh, that came out of the children's room, but it could be repurposed for any room, um, down in the cellar, and it wasn't purchased that long ago. Um, but it's been put in the cellar. Um, but it, it's very useful. It was very expensive. We held a, a book sale to pay for it. And, um, I think Darcy's well aware of it. And that would be a start of, of being able to utilize movable shelving.
Kathy, uh, this is Bergen. I apologize. I'm a little late to the meeting. Um, a patron needed me, but, um, because I don't have any pictures of that shelf put together. I've had, I've, I've seen it in the basement, but I have a hard time envisioning.
Trying finding something.
We had a whole booklet on it, how to put it together, and we put it together ourselves. Um, it was delivered in pieces, and we did put it together ourselves, um, a long time ago, and it's a large piece. It was multi-thousands of dollars.
But it's, it's. Look more into.
Really, it, it fairly new in the terminology of a library.
It's three different webs.
It's at least, yes, it's five feet high.
Space itself.
It's big.
Yeah, it might work if we makeover the space. It didn't work in the space before, but it might work with a makeover. I. Right.
Uh, but that's all gonna be.
Yeah. If, if, if they get the same thing for the company that specializes in libraries, they would do it. And I like the suggestion that she made, that maybe we'd get a pod so we can move the library all at once instead of in parts.
I mean, yeah, we'd have to look into that funding. I haven't looked into that.
We did that before, when we changed the library around about fifteen years ago, and we had, I think, two pods, and filled them up with dollies, and, uh, were able to put it back at some, some bit of leisure. So it did, it did help.
I came in a little late, so I apologize if you covered this in the beginning. Uh, my question to Darcy, Rebecca, was so, about the time, was solely because we're in the midst of planning the fall, and it would be to close for a week or not have activities. I'd rather not put them on the calendar.
Yeah.
Did you all, and again, if I didn't even touch on them.
Uh, there, there's nothing completely picked yet.
Because it has to go out to bid. And I'm glad, because when we were talking the other day, it's like, it's probably already gone out to bid, so we're not gonna get these movers. I mean, we go, because thinking it was gonna happen like within this month, and you can't just say, yep, we have a person, boom, 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 and I was like, oh, it's gone out. We're gonna have somebody come and check, here's some books from that box, that box, you know. I really would hope we could do that, because it was, and, and the other thought, um, Rebecca, is that when they do finish the carpeting and they put the books back in and the shelving back in, it's gonna be a different alignment. They're going to have linear instead of this broken up kind of thing.
The original design.
The original, we're going back to the original design.
Yeah, I mean, definitely linear, some perpendicular, but nothing that's amazing.
So, yeah.
Yes, and we also, I think, plan to move the teen section out to where the media is now, which will be exciting, because they'll have really their own space, but not like thrown into a corner. That's really the meeting room, which will be nice.
Are we talking about doing, uh, uh, the book stacks, the main stacks, separate from the other moves? The teen room and all that, or are we doing it all at once?
I think it would be done all at once, yeah. Um, because why would we put the shelving back and then have to move it again?
But on a positive note, it will open up this space and provide, I mean, within reason, two separate meeting rooms.
Mm-hmm.
Would, when they, so they're doing the everything, but everything's been carpeted, the whole library?
Well, this is gonna be a hard floor.
Okay.
This.
So when they.
The whole library's been re-core.
Right.
Yes.
But what I mean, so like.
You have to get everything out of.
Everything, the whole library, or could like the children's room just be moved here?
That's what we do. We don't, we want to avoid that if we plan. If we do it all at once, it's much better.
Yeah, I know. Over and over, yeah.
But I'm sure.
Exactly. I doubt they'd be doing all the carpeting too in one day. I doubt.
No, they won't do that. They know.
So.
They could, it would be expedited, be done quicker, if things didn't have to get moved back and forth.
Yes.
Did you say, um, staff and volunteers did it all before? You did not have movers? Is that correct?
Staff, volunteers, and trustees did it all before, and many relatives of the same. And we closed on a Friday of, uh, Patriots Day weekend. We did it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and opened on Tuesday.
What was, what was the scope of that project, Kathy?
Uh, it's all new carpeting and flooring, and in the, uh, meeting room, and all the shelving was moved, and it was, uh, the Dewey Decimal System was done away with, and it went to a bookstore type of, um, setup. That was under Deb Hoadley, when she was the director.
Right, but I'm sorry, the whole library or just the meeting room?
No, the whole library was done, but we kept the children's, we, we kept the children's room open for that one Friday, and, um, then we, we moved it all. It wasn't easy, and of course, the carpeting does not go under the fixed shelving. Uh, it was done around the fixed shelving.
It depends on what we're able to do.
When, and again, I just missed this. When you re-carpeted town hall, did you close and have, no?
We didn't close town hall. We ended up doing it, um, in a phased approach, because luckily for us, we had the hallway. So we did, like, each department had a day, or like, there was non-conflicting movement, where like, one office would go into the hall, it would be done, and then they'd move back in. One office would move out to all, so while an office may have been closed, so to speak, they were either located in another office, operating on a different computer for that particular time, but we had that luxury where we just kind of go to the center and went out. It's not kind of the same layout.
Yeah.
We don't have the same room.
Yeah, and one building is harder.
You have an empty office, and it's like, oh, they do that one, and then take this office and put it in there, get this one, take that office, put it there, because they, they shuffled a bunch of them, which was very handy.
So, on that, um, paper that Darcy just gave Rebecca, that has, I think it's three different companies that
Yeah, well, it has information about MHEC itself, but I think it very possibly. I did read it, and I don't know if I absorbed everything, because there's some.
If I have a, a town, if it has a, a combined contract number or a state blanket contract number, that would be perfect, because as long as we can verify that that contract is still in good standing, we'd be able to move forward without going through a procurement process. Because that company's already locked in with prevailing wage rates, et cetera, and so fit on the state contract itself. We would be in good, in good shape, though, if we had those names in the contract. All that. Okay.
They had done, she mentioned the three towns in Massachusetts, but I would doubt that those towns didn't have to go through bidding and everything like we do. They.
Every town has to.
Right, so if.
Every town has to, depending on contracting. I know Mary Lou sent me a specific name, so I will be do it, giving you more information about that and seeing if they are part of this as well. Um. That's in my, that's in my email.
Yeah, that sounds great. Um.
Yes, so that's, I think, the biggest thing right now, like.
Is there, is there a consideration that we, we, meaning the, the team, may still, um, move things, or?
Uh, I don't think the shelving, the, the books? Probably. I mean, I, I don't, wouldn't expect the movers to do the books.
We could split it up a little with the shelves you have on wheels already.
They do do the books. They do everything.
Yeah. Hey.
These library movers do all, do everything. They move the shelves and they move the books. And they, 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 they're, they're skilled, and they, they, the books go back where they're supposed to go.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Which kind of makes every patron taking out twenty books.
They move, they move everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
They move the entire. They, this, the company or the name I gave you, that my friend Janet gave me, they do it. The entire North End of a High School Library from one building to another. They moved everything, the shelves, the books, everything, and Janet said it was perfect.
Okay.
They, see, that, yeah, that's why you get a moving company, because they, they have, they know what they're supposed to do.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my experience of this, of this magnitude is, they'll come in and they'll go, and they'll look at a bookshelf, and they'll label one A1. Everything A1 goes in a box labeled, labeled A1. The second shelf is A2. Everything goes into that box labeled A2. Then they just move it all out. You tell, you tell them where you want the shelves to go, and they move it back in.
Okay.
Which makes taking, every patron taking twenty books out, maybe a lot more work on the other end for the staff having to re-shelf.
That's, that's a fair point.
Yes.
Kathy, the purpose of the twenty books, it, it's an example of what has been done before, and, and it was.
Yeah.
What it is, is not that the patron takes out twenty books that are in order. It could be.
No.
It's that they, if the library would probably be closed for a number of days, so it's a way of just encouraging people to take out books, to hold them over these days, and to just help with, um, you know, to encourage circulation, actually, especially with the kids. So it, it isn't necessarily that the patron would go and just pick a shelf and take out twenty books.
We would have to just make sure that they.
It was actually done in April before their building program.
Interesting.
They did encourage, I don't even know if it was twenty, but it was encouraging people to take out a book.
Yeah. We just need to leave enough space to interfile, which isn't that hard, because we will be doing a meeting too.
Idea.
Yeah.
Like something that has to be done. But looking up here, it's Franklin Public Library, Groton, um, or else the National Library. Reuben Horn Library, I don't know where that is, and we'll, we'll have. So all of those are Massachusetts libraries that they have down this, this company, this.
Oh, good.
And L R, National Library Relocations.
Oh, good.
Store them, they provide the storage. So getting a pod they have is stored. I guess, um, stored. I'm reading, I'm just quickly looking at their books.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway.
Anyway, that information will go to you guys. Yeah.
Is there a date the carpets need to be installed by?
No, so the one good thing is that, again, like we stated, that the monies came from, um, and I'm trying to verify, and I'm having trouble muting my hotspot now, but, um, is that it's from American Rescue Funds, and American Rescue Funds, or we, we have some time that we're able to utilize, and we're not restricted just to the fiscal year. Um, so that is a good, a good sign. Um, I just looking to confirm that now. But I'm pretty sure that, and the HVAC was, and I know that the HVAC we were able to get out to bid even sooner, because it was on the, the American Rescue Funds instead of the, um, the budget, so we were able to get it out to bid in June, and so it was installed.
Mm-hmm.
So where does this leave us? We're gonna pursue with, uh, Rebecca, commercial movers. At the same time, we're gonna look at the possibility of doing it ourselves.
Doing it ourselves is a huge, huge, huge job. I think professional movers would do it in less time, more accurately. And.
Yeah, very big at a price.
Yeah, I would say that the first thing is.
Yeah.
So if, if, um, if Darcy can get me the names, or I can go through this in a little bit more detail and figure out exactly where it is and what the contract number is, Steve and I will work to contact those companies and set up a time for them to come out and provide quotes and estimates based upon the square footage of the area and what's being requested. Once we're able to get that figure, we'll then have an, uh, follow-up conversation, either with the board themselves, or with Darcy, if, if given the authority to make those determinations, and then um, see exactly what would be, um, advantageous for the library and financially, in terms of what the town can offer in addition to what it's already put forward for those improvements, uh, for the carpet, uh, installation. Um, then, once that's identified and we move forward, we figure out that plan, then we can work to get the, the bid for the flooring out and see what we can get for pricing on that. Um, that will then have to then be coordinated with the movers as to when that's all taking place and scheduling, et cetera. So then we'll, we'll go have another meeting and talk to Darcy about programming, what makes sense. It might say, hey, well, you can't do it in the winter, it's just too busy, you need to do it in the spring. So then we'll just make sure that we have that um, confirmed with the contractors. We have a contract in place, so everybody is, are ready to go when, when that particular time comes.
Okay.
Good plan.
Yeah.
Very good plan.
You have questions for us?
Um, not on that front.
Okay.
Okay.
Other friends?
Just as long as, 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 as I can work with, if the board allows me to work closely with Darcy to make sure that, and I don't know if she can send out emails to the board and, you know. Share the development and progress of those conversations and then at least then we're all on the same page. So no one's operating in a vacuum.
Always keep them appraised.
Sounds like a plan.
Everything.
We trust Darcy.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
That's why you get the big bucks.
I think we're just, we're all anxious to, you know, hopefully it will happen sooner than later. So that we can.
Yeah. Well, get that information very soon.
Get this project rolling.
Yes.
Because a lot of things are hinging on the grant.
Yes, yes.
Changes we wanna make.
Exactly.
Would we also take this opportunity to um utilize perhaps prisoners as we've done before to paint? That would take a great deal of coordination to have that done, but it certainly badly, certain areas badly need it. Um, the staffing, the staff area needs it and uh there's others, but uh would we be able to fit that in?
This is also an opportunity to act upon some of Christie's uh suggestions about streamlining uh book collection. You know, I need the video, so I mean, that'll lessen the load.
Definitely, a good heavy reading.
Started working on that part.
Good. Excellent. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, and and I forgot you, when you talk about like reorganization as well. I don't know if you have like a floor plan that you, we can utilize to have you put together your scenarios or options if you haven't already done so in terms of what you're looking and envisioning for moving sections, if you're looking to do that or not.
We have some rough ones that aren't to scale, but we will work on it better.
It doesn't have to be. Good plans. They're very well laid out plans, Bergen.
No, I mean, they're, they are great. Like, they're just, like I said, not to scale.
This is maybe where Steve could help us. Hello, maybe Steve could help us with this because. Getting, getting the space, the space, getting the space measurements down accurately is gonna be critical to, to the move. So we don't wanna. Yeah, I don't know, Steve, is that your, in your ballpark? Would you help us out with that?
I could do that. I can get you a copy of the uh, the original layout too, we have.
Beautiful, beautiful.
And it'll give you an idea of what you can do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All the measurements are on the plans, so you'll have everything you need for measurements.
Would, would they be extra copies so we don't? Get in trouble for spoiling them?
Yeah, we, we can scan them and bring them over.
Okay, great.
And that would also be helpful to us too, because when we contact individuals and other companies, they might not be local, local, local. They might wanna bid the job, but they might not wanna come out specifically, specifically to the site.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Requirements. So that's a great idea, Steve.
That makes total sense.
Well, you can look at the original one and then go, well, we could make this a little better over here. And, you know, maybe adjust some things from the original, because the architects, I'm sure, were not librarians. They were just. Line it, lining up racks and I'm sure that's all they did.
Has racks on it? On this?
And it shows where the bookshelves are.
Oh.
The original.
We guarantee you won't, we guarantee you won't move any walls.
Am I hearing correctly then, I should hold off before I, I order any furniture as part of the grant? Until we know when we're, where things are going to end up.
I think we're only talking about a time, timeframe.
I mean.
And, and you need to do that. To utilize your grant, is that correct, Bergen?
I do, though, I, I mean, I think I. Time, I can't until October first.
Yeah, in terms of the grant, because it's mainly, it's not the rest of the space, maybe we can. You know, make it an exception for like stuff that we replace and then move and move back. I mean.
I don't, I don't mind waiting. I don't think there's an end date on, I mean, a year, but I don't think like it has to be done before this.
Calendar year.
The federal fiscal year, but not the calendar year.
Year is a calendar year.
That was, that was my point I was trying to get to.
Okay, but I was gonna say, federal fiscal year, we made that mistake before. I know for a fact they're not.
There's so many fiscal years.
That's what my.
Okay.
So you have to, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. But I think it would depend. I mean, if there were larger items that you know you're gonna be utilizing and a part of it, then I think that those, those items are, that makes sense. As long as you have place to store them or you can use them in the interim and you have some space if we can.
Yeah, that's the, that's a good point.
But the smaller items maybe you will, later on, so.
Thank you.
We'll strategize a little bit, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think that. Doing some of the seating and small tables that we've seen in a, in your examples would in any way affect the ultimate layout.
No, just storage.
It's just that if you wanna move your desk or I, you know, I mean, you have to think about that time, like, wanna try that. I mean, there's nothing to stop that.
Yeah, and it'll depend on what desk.
Kind of that domino effect though, right? Because that means we need to move that, which then would. Like, I, I'm, I'm trying, I would, I'd like to be flexible for everyone, just that.
Yeah.
It's just if you, if we find out this can't be done until the spring and we may, then we just backtrack to your side. Well, maybe we wanna move a few things.
See how it works.
Try and try it.
Okay.
You know, we necessarily put that whole project on hold is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Right.
Good to know.
We would just revisit it.
Have a plan B though.
Yeah, like I said, we will sit down and strategize and.
I, I think, where, where we're going with this is we need to talk to Bergen about what we can do. Uh, pending a delay in, in the major move. So, you know, if it's gonna impact her ability to purchase stuff and she has to do it before a certain date, you know, we probably should do it and worry about storage later.
Right.
Okay, I'm hoping it's September thirty.
And they might give you an extension too, within reasonable um accommodations be made, given the circumstances.
Yeah, well.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any other questions for Rebecca or Steve?
Uh, I do. Uh, Rebecca, could you update us on the, the electrical issues?
Yes, so uh, there was, um, I actually, as I mentioned, came from the finance board meeting just um at, at five thirty. Um, as we gear up, I know already for budget FY twenty-five, um, there is no rest for the wicked. But essentially, we are starting to get into our process, what we're gonna be doing this year, changing things up a little bit in terms of scheduling, et cetera, et cetera. But the first component of our budgetary season is the capital improvement plan. That is the first thing that we analyze. And so we're gonna be sending out the emails we do to all of our departments and saying, hey, what is it that you need for capital improvement projects for the upcoming fiscal year? Whether it be uh facilities related, whether it be technology related, or whether or not it's something like a vehicle or anything of that nature. Um, it does have to meet the thresholds, the thresholds at the last fiscal uh city town meeting were increased. Um, so in order to be on the official capital plan, it needs to meet that twenty thousand dollar threshold. Uh, the reason that we did that is it allows us to take care of smaller projects and with the way the economy is and the way projects cost, we would have to wait until we went to annual town meeting in order to allow for that capital project to be improved. So increasing that threshold allows us to take care of some of the bo, bows, smaller item without having to go through that process. Um, so that being said, one of the things, again, with Steve's new role and the way that we're now taking and creating that division within the highway department, is taking a closer look at our facilities and the needs of our facilities, especially since. Like schools, they were built in the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies and they've done well, but now they're starting to fall into repair and wanna make sure that our facilities are in good standing so that they don't get to a point where we're behind the eight ball. We wanna be as much in front of it as we possibly can. So we've gone around to our different buildings and Steve and our building commissioner, Sam Jocelyn, were able to go through uh the library. And so before we did that, we noted in our capital plan last year, because even though it might not meet the threshold on some items, we just have like an inventory, things to look at, like good, bad, fair, things to address or things to keep an eye on. And one of the first things was the roof. Um, out of all of the roofs in the facility, this facility specifically, we need to fix. And the library is the worst of the three buildings. So we have, our roof uh estimates came in for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars just for PD. Uh, for this building, we're looking at four hundred thousand dollars. And then for Town Hall, we're looking at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So all of those roofs built in the same downtime all need to be replaced. We have leaks in the uh garage bay over at the fire station. And then, as you all know, we have leaks over at the foyer that Steve has been so graciously fixing and, you know, being creative, but trying to fix it. Um, has been able to help, but we can't continue to do that. So that one of our big projects, and like I just told the finance board, we might not be able to take out additional debt this year based upon what we have for outstanding debt in our ratios with the school. But next fiscal year, we really need to take it into consideration because otherwise we're gonna start having a lot bigger problems. But the other larger problem that we identified last year is that we have, and I always butcher it, so I brought my thing, federal Pacific. Um, electrical panels in all three of our buildings. And all of them are no longer being made in production and or have parts and pieces and to be fixed. Even more so, the worst part of it, about it, and again, um, insurance won't cover the panels anymore. So we're having issues with our insurance for all three of the buildings based upon the electrical panel. The electrical panels cost about two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars to replace in each individual building. So those are big, 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 big capital items that sound small, but they're really big. And so I told the finance board that they're of top priority. But again, with the new department and the new, a new division and the way that we want Steve to be more involved with the facilities and making sure that we're staying on top of those issues is that. We're going around every building and doing like an inventory to kind of see where we are and whatnot. So Sam and, and Steve went through the building and so we had a couple of things that you probably, again, are already familiar with. Um, the roof expectancy, i- it's gone. We, we, we think that we need to do again this roof first of all of them, if we're not gonna try and do them all together. And again, just as, as a side back note is that you always wanna try and do more projects together because you're getting better rates. Um, when you go and take on additional debt, so we would more likely add projects, not just do one. But if we had to choose one and that's the only thing we could choose, right now it would be a roof. Um, and specifically the library room. Uh, the other ones is obviously the bay windows and the flashing associated with the windows. There's been leaks, uh trim boards on the exterior need to be replaced. Um, then we have the um. Old air conditioning units need to be removed and the window needs to be replaced. I know the HVAC system, HVAC system was just installed, so that's been great. But there's, I guess, some other older systems that have been in place that need to be removed and then whatever has been happening needs to be, and.
Basically, we need a window like that put into the back workroom slash kitchen.
Yeah.
Cause those are, that's not a high dollar job. Like, but it's, it's on the list, it's like.
And so then we have the um, uh, the basement wall and the stairwell. Uh, there's uh concrete, what is it, ball?
Spalling?
Yes.
Um, so that. It's leaking. And there's also a substantial uh foundation to roof crack. And the uh, and the red brick, which I didn't see until Sam saw it as I, oh.
Then we have some ceiling tiles that need to be replaced, as we all know. Um, then there's some lights that need to be changed out for LED, LED bulbs for some energy saving. Uh, the handicap rail and ramp in the parking lot need to be addressed and be uh brought into compliance. Um, and then there's a couple of those smaller rot, like items and painting items that are listed. So as we had discussed, there's smaller items that we believe that we would be able to start prioritizing in all three of these buildings and addressing for you. Um, something that, you know, like the five thousand to ten thousand type range that we can kind of do like this.
The window, the AC units in the back, that would be, I think we could be under.
Little things like that. And then we're also looking at the um utilizing the MOD uh action grant to uh take care of the handicap um ramp. We were fortunate enough to receive a grant for Town Hall that allowed us to also um take into consideration the doors. So we were able to put in um accessible doors here, Town Hall and over at PD. Um, it will also take into consideration now we have proper signage in, in Town Hall with um that uh handicap accessible uh and had braille, et cetera. Uh, so little items like that and we think we would be able to qualify for that. So there's some of those smaller items that we are taking care of, but some of the larger ones, like you mentioned, Mr. Chair, like those are the bigger items that we can't ignore and are very costly. So we are a little concerned as to what the impact will be to the town. Given that we just don't have the money. And we also just recently passed an override. The issue with the school is not necessarily gone away per se. And if you haven't already heard, um, Whittier Vocational Tech is going to be coming forward with a vote in order to do a brand new school there. And even if it does not pass, that does not mean that they will not come forward with a very heavy capital need, which is going to be a um fire sprinkler alarm system, which is the reason that they are unable to make any future upgrades to their building, which is extremely costly. And that's why they went to the upgrade because you're only gonna spend a hundred million dollars more, why not and get a brand new school? But it is a very hefty expense. So from a budgetary standpoint, we're, we're gonna be, see, we're gonna be experiencing challenges. So it, it's um, I don't have more details in regards to the specific, maybe um Steve can weigh in more about the electrical panels. I just know that's the name of them, that they don't make them anymore. There's no switchers anymore. There's, you can't find them.
They don't insure them anymore because they start on fire.
Yay, that's great to hear.
I've noticed it before in Town Hall, I have a, uh, the floor buffer. And if you get a tacky spot in the floor, it starts to uh really starts working, so it's drawing as much current as it can. And the breaker stone pop.
Wow.
So that's a twenty amp machine on a twenty amp line. If you use all of it, it should pop it. And it doesn't. So. That's not saying that I can't pop them, but uh our panels at Town Hall are just. There, there's a lot. So everything. Basically is Town Hall and then the library would be the easiest one to upgrade because you only have a few panels. You got a main cutoff where the panel in the closet, and there's a couple of small ones downstairs where it's Town Hall is.
Panels of fun panels.
Well.
This is, all of these buildings we're talking about are almost fifty years old too. So, you know.
Well, there, the police wanna upgrade the generator, but the generator guy won't touch the panels. He looked at that and he's like, nope. He goes, I'll give you a price, but you have to fix this part.
Yeah.
Because he's liable, he connects into, into these panels, which are.
Which is why all of those other smaller projects too, whereas night where it's the crap in the wall is okay, because everything else is causing us issues. So like, when we wanted to do the HVAC over at the uh Town Hall, it caused an issue when the Council on Aging wanted to add their additional outlet for their refrigerator caused an issue because now we're overloading that particular panel and we are the central hub. So whatever you plug into, you, you know, the police use us as a backup and we are the backup to the police. So we're, we're both not gonna be able to back up either one and we're just gonna be in really big trouble. So the library won't be as much impacted by the electrical panel component, but um it's still a, a concern and, and does eliminate our ability to help with some of the other capital needs of, of the library as well.
I had one question for Steve and Rebecca. When we talk about the roof at the library, uh, we absolutely sure that the constant flood in the foyer is caused by a roofing problem because that's been looked at several times over the years and it was determined that it wasn't a roofing problem in that particular area. But something to do with the false chimney, uh, the decorative type thing on the outside of the building that possibly could be causing that. I'd hate to see a whole new roof and not have that leak that's been going on forever. Um.
The roof is brittle, so we are losing shingles. And Lauren called me one morning saying it's raining in the kitchen. And it was a little warm windy storm. I don't know if it was a hurricane remnant or something. But I came over and looked at it and I went outside and the shingles were missing above that. So I went up and put on a couple more and that's a Band-Aid.
Right.
It did come off again. But over the foyer, I put so much caulk in there. I mean, it's, it's structural at this point. So all I can think is it's the vents and I went up in the attic. And all around the vents, you can see when the wind blows, the water comes against it or through it. And then it just follows right down the inside of the wall. And then it comes out right on the. On the outside of the inside doors, it's just. Ends up right there.
Do you need a vent up here?
The, the, well, the estimates we got are for the roof, all the fascia and sopit boards. So the, the fascia is out, the sopit's under and then your brick. And it does, they did quote those vents, which they won't be the same. They won't be wood. And they'll probably be lubered, cause these are just, this is just a big piece of screen inside. The louvers on there now and somehow, I mean, the louvers on this one, I leaned on it and half of it fell off.
It's the same thing, isn't it?
But spacing a different direction. So when we get nor'easters, everything comes this way. So if we get a rainstorm coming from the pines way like we did yesterday. There was a couple of wet spots over there, but it didn't drip. That was probably more on volume than direction, but the nor'easter, you could have a really light rain and this side of the building is wet. That's gonna be.
And that's been leaking since the nineties.
Somebody told me it was leaking since the day they.
Yeah, since the day the place was built.
Yeah, I don't know if that was Jerry Tibbetts or I, I don't know who told me that, but somebody told me it's like they just shook their head. So I think if the vent is a different configuration. And, you know, I can't actually get to the top of it to seal it. It's too high up. So that's where roofers come in. So I'm all set with that high in the ladder. Well, when they do the roofs. There's, there's ice and water shield is what they put right at the ease. And now they're gonna go much higher up. So this corner here, we came in one morning and all kinds of books were ruined because we had. Remember that? We had sleep and sleep built up on the roof and then we had ice. And then in the daytime, it warmed up a little bit and it went, the ice and water shield's only three feet up. So they'll go at least six feet up when they do it. And that'll prevent, you know, if we do happen to get ice dams, it'll be much less problem. You know, if we see him, I can go crack him and, you know, you won't have that. That kind of thing happened.
Thank you for that. Exactly.
We can focus on good news, like getting the grants and the program. So all of that should not be clouded by some of the other rain clouds that we have before.
Forty years to get somebody to oversee the buildings. There's never been anybody, and I can tell because when I started in the first two years I was here. We did the boiler in town hall. We did two boilers in the police station. We did hot water in town hall. We've done, I can't even tell you how many AC systems. There's only one lot. To replace and that's all in five years.
Somebody along.
I know Kermit Cross was, was doing stuff. I don't know how much stuff. But there was a significant amount of time with nobody because. You know, everything.
Pretty much the finance director Greg LeBrecque was the handyman, the, the everything.
He did do things.
Yes, he did.
So, no, I think it's time that the town has to, you know, do this.
Well, like the bleach keeps us, we got really good bones and if you let, if you let the skin go.
Well, thank you Rebecca and Steve for coming and sharing all this with us.
Rebecca, can I end with the good news? August twenty third. That will mark the one year anniversary of Bergen's employment with us. What a plus this has been for us. Now, the reason I know this is I almost had a heart attack because I went on the, the town's website. And there's a job posting for Bergen's position. Could we please remove it?
There's no way that's a true statement.
I thought you were going to say that's our summer reading wrap up party day. I, for some reason I had twenty seventh in my mind, so. There's definitely something out in the internet land because every once in a while someone will mention it to me. Send your link, Bob.
Cause that is definitely not the case. I assure you, I, I was very happy to have partaken in the, the hiring process with Bergen. She's one of our best hires by far and I would definitely not.
Oh, it was a great time.
Thanks everyone. It really, I, it's hard, it's hard to believe it's been a year, but it's been great.
There's so much action in here now.
I came in the other day with two of my grandchildren who do not move. I have two that are here all the time. The other two are the books. Well, they took out ten books. Can we go back? I had them yesterday. Can we go back to the library? I mean, because she was so welcoming and so. Spent the time and there were so many kids, Miss Bergen, Miss Bergen, Miss Bergen, Miss Bergen. Like, I'm like, how does she deal with all these children at one time in the library? I need help here and everyone was just.
Grove, in general, the Grove and families have been incredibly welcome and, and welcoming and to your point, like they're so excited that there are things going on. So it's, I mean, the challenge now is fitting in all these volunteers who want to donate programs.
Wonderful.
Yes, absolutely.
Are we all set with Rebecca? We wanna thank her and Steve.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Oh, all the exciting things.
Feel free to stick around if you like.
Well, thank you again for inviting us. We can never do or be of assistance. I mean, you obviously know Steve is in the building quite frequently and then you all know where my office is, my email, my cell phone. Whatever you need, obviously call, text, email, I'm there.
Thank you Rebecca.
Take some books.
Okay, it's, it's seven o'clock already, so we might wanna, you know. So next up, next up with the minutes. Anyone have any questions on the minutes?
Did we? Pass the minutes of. I did. Okay, you did. Cause I, I, I couldn't remember if it was here or the council agent. We didn't have a farm people. So there's the eight oh three and then our seven.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of seven twelve.
Okay, all those in favor? Jan? Laurel? Lee? Jay? Mary Lou? Kathy? Nancy? Bob, I approved.
People who don't attend those have to abstain. Oh, seven twelve. I was mixing up the dates. Sorry. Never mind, never mind. I mixed it up with last week. I am having a day. I called Mary Lou Laurel's name earlier.
I moved the, we accepted minutes for July.
Laurel? Lee? Jay?
I was not there.
Okay, Mary Lou? Kathy?
Abstain.
Nancy?
Abstain.
Bob, I. Darcy, you're up.
This is the safe place.
Okay, I mean. I, the numbers as per usual are great. I do, does anybody have any questions about the CIRC statistics? I did the same layout as I did last time.
I think they're wonderful.
They are wonderful. The programming numbers as per usual, wonderful. Included the standout programming. The museum pass numbers, any questions about those?
Even going up compared to other years, I think.
I think. Very possible. Okay, so read the warrants. Twenty four oh one was twenty six thousand dollars, twenty six thousand four hundred dollars and twenty four cents. The majority of that was. MVLC dues. Twenty four oh three was four hundred and seventy four dollars and forty five cents and the total was twenty six thousand. Eight hundred and seventy four dollars and sixty cents. Updated, update on heiress and state aid. I turned in the heiress. That's all set. I filled in pretty much everything on the financial report except for what the numbers I have to get from Ellen, the town accountant. And all the compliance were good. So no worries about materials. I know that's a, we haven't had to worry for a while, but I like to say it. Any questions about that?
The timing matter.
I love to do it. So the next one, the next thing on here was Bergen's funding request. So. If you wanted to discuss that, that's fine. I did send them what you sent me and I wanna make sure I did the math right. Was it an extra three sixty seven fifty?
That sounds correct. I, I don't have. Sixty originally and now it's over six hundred. And that is if all the children do turn in their sheets. Which I think that's what's happening tonight.
Yes, it's been great. There's been so much participation with both youth and adult.
I think this is a wonderful problem to have and I'd like to make a motion that we. Remove three hundred and sixty seven dollars and fifty cents from our donation account to. Fund the remainder of the prizes for the summer reading.
All those in favor? Jan?
I, I just had a question. Do you feel that's the best account?
The donations.
Sometimes maybe you can share the balances for those.
Yes, I will. They, Ellen's carrying them over to the new fiscal year. They're not all set yet. That's why they're variant. I will, I promise. It's just. The special account variance reports aren't ready yet. That's all.
Then I say aye to them.
Uh, any other discussion, I guess? Okay, Jan says yes. Laurel? Lee?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Congratulations Bergen on these amazing numbers.
Very happy young faces.
Then I also wanna say that on the financial report every year at the very end, it asks for. How many people are currently participating in the summer reading? And just compared to, it also lists last year's numbers and just compared to last year.
No comparison.
That's wonderful because it means there are a lot of young people reading.
Reading their twelve books, which is.
They are multiple sheets and a little girl yesterday, she was here for three hours and she was picking up books and going to the beanbag and eating.
You have to get your contact Santa over here and call him.
I see you're all set. Motion to approve director's report?
Seems all set.
Okay, second? Any discussion? Jan?
Oh, no. I'm, I, everything else was pretty boo. It's just.
I think, I think if you, if you said Laurel made the motion, I think Bob seconded.
Okay, Jan?
Yes, I.
Laurel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Okay, Duke. Mary Lou, you're up.
Okay, I have, I don't have, I don't have much of anything, except that I did send you. I hope everybody got it. And. That's all I have, really. There's nothing new.
Okay, thank you for that.
Motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the treasures you pulled. Well, kind of is what it is, but if he's calling for a motion, then.
We got a second from Laurel.
Okay, any discussion? Here we go, Jan? Laurel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Okay, Kath- Kathy, excuse me.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Okay, next to the review of director's evaluation.
What about the bond for treasurer?
Yeah, that was just not deleted.
I'm deleting it then.
I thought the previous minutes, we were gonna review it over the course of several minutes if we had any changes, recommendations.
No, no, we're talking about the, the thing you skipped on the agenda was the bonds that the treasurer, but we actually voted it last, last meeting.
It also was already turned in.
And it's already been turned in. So that was number six on your agenda. So we, you went from five to seven.
Wasn't that last month's?
It was, it was just included for this time by accident.
Oh, okay. So delete it.
Delete it, right? That's exactly what I was gonna say. We did it last, last time.
Director's evaluation? Any discussion?
One thing, I'm sorry, I, go ahead, Darcy.
No, I just said I thought it looked good, but Kathy, you go ahead.
I had one, one thing that I couldn't quite place on. I had one uh, one thing that I couldn't quite place on it, was something that's very important in any library, but uh mostly in a library of the size that we're trying to function in, which is organizational skills.
Well, number four talks to organization and time management.
Mm-hmm.
But. Yeah, it doesn't look like there's anything specific to.
Right, I just thought that's imp, seemed to me that's, that's very important, especially for the space crunch.
How would you want it worded? Or what we?
I, I really don't know, would it be a heading uh with sub questions, I, I'm not sure, does anybody have any?
Number four says organizational and time management.
Right, that's what Nancy, yeah.
Measures time effectively, and then it, it fears to, and they anticipates deadlines.
And just add a.
Right, and I'm talking about uh organization of library spaces.
Of library, what, sorry, I guess I.
Space.
Organization.
Or overseas organization of libraries, there's something that, cause actively, it is, I really do you know, let the people who, you know, Bergen and Sue organize that. But I do see what they are doing, yes, so overseeing, exactly, so maybe where others oversee.
Yeah, I think you're right.
What, would that go?
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Darcy.
Or would it go under organization and management or planning and programming?
Under staffing, I think, overseeing of organizational activities of the, of the two senior librarians.
But what I, what I really meant is organization of the physical plant.
That's not her job, that's the job of Bergen and Sue.
Well, overall.
Overall, yeah.
Oh, no, overall, it is her job.
Her job is to oversee them doing that.
And maybe that's part of overseeing the personnel.
Yeah, so that's why I said you go into personnel.
Yeah. It's okay.
I, I have two, two questions. One, this evaluation form, is that instead of or the same as a performance appraisal?
I think it's probably considered the same as.
Okay, then, then I have a question, no way around here is uh an evaluation as respects goals. That definitely should be a standalone item.
That's one.
Goals that they are.
We use now this goals every year, which the, the director sense agrees to.
It's at the end of the form.
Number eleven?
Yeah, but it isn't.
I think what he's saying is.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the actual goals.
Making a goal for this year, I will.
Yeah, like a section filling that filled out or.
Or two, what's going.
Yeah.
This is.
Three point one or three point two down at the end.
And also attach it to this.
So, are you asking Bob that we should evaluate the goals she makes? Do we evaluate that he's making goals, I'm not sure.
Wait, three point one?
You're asking.
If this is, this is the same as a valuation, you know, the goals should be on here.
They are, they are.
They are, three point one, three point two. There, it's well, build in goals.
But it does.
As pertaining to the annual action plan.
We, we have, we've set actual goals. And they're not stated here.
It, th- this is just the form that we want to approve before we fill it in for Darcy.
Then the goals will be filled in.
Do you mean that has she met the goals from last year? Is that what you mean?
Whatever goal she's operating under right now.
Right, so from last year, if there were goals set, that you set for yourself when we worked on, I don't know if we did that last year or.
I think I, every year, for the past two years, I've done a write-up, I can continue doing a write-up.
Yeah, yeah.
As of, yeah, have you met these?
Right, so, yeah, this is the current year goals and then next year goals.
Yeah.
The, tho- those goals would go into the current year, right?
So that's where you fill them in, I believe.
Right. So we just didn't put them in, Bob, because we were gonna talk about the form.
Right.
And see if the form was acceptable to use.
So, uh, when do we rate goals, goals, goal performance?
Three point one.
When we all say like this form is okay, we decide to use it, and then I guess we'll fill it out, I don't know how the process goes.
Yeah.
At the end.
Yeah.
Three point one says.
My question is.
Project, current year, like has she met the goal, so what, we have three goals here, or four, yeah, three.
And the answer is.
It could add. Do you see it, three point one?
That would tie into the annual action plan, am I correct?
Well, tho- those are two separate things, the director evaluation and the action plan are two separate things.
Yeah, the action plan goes to MBLC, and it's very much tied into our strategic plan.
Right.
It's, I take them, the action plan parts directly from the strategic plan.
We're just, we're just talking about evaluation, evaluation of the director's performance. So. If we look at, did you do, did you make goals, yes, did you work on them, yes, so we're done, with, I don't think we need to do any more than that.
And I can do another write-up, and we can attach it.
So I didn't see.
Right.
We're, we're, we're ready to do the performance appraisal.
Or something.
It was, we found there.
Yeah.
By the time you get to the end.
If that makes sense.
Makes sense to me, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
What? That's okay.
Looks, he still looks confused, did you see it, Bob?
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Did you feel something should be added into it, Bob?
In my experience, when we set goals for someone, that is a primary part of their performance evaluation.
Right.
And where is that done, I guess is, is my question. Goal number one was we did this, blah, 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 specific, and where do we address that?
Three point.
This is all general.
Three point one, we would put that in there.
Okay, you're gonna put in the specific goals.
Right, right, this is like every year, we can use this form, we could put six goals here, we can.
Well, whatever the goals were, are out.
Right, right.
What am I, okay.
And then you say, you know, when, when was the target date, so it might be something that, you know, in the next three years, we'd like you to see you do boop, 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 or whatever, or what Darcy said, the next three years, I hope to, you know, and then.
Yeah.
What's the target date, and then did, did it get completed? And we have room for comments too, anywhere here, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, under that, the next bullet point is the goal task project for next year. This like.
Probably forward. Probably would be a good idea when we finalize this form, before we send it out to everybody to fill out for this particular
Mm-hmm.
Fall, that we will type those goals in from last year, so everybody has them in front of them, you know what I mean? Who won't be trying to remember.
Yeah, and in general, the write-up has been.
Would that make sense?
Like, I've been setting my own, and, but those can be filled into.
Right, right.
That, and we can come up with them together when we discuss the evaluation results and fill that in. Right.
But as far as, we, we still didn't finish with the uh or space, right, organization.
Yeah, that was my question.
And I don't think we finished that. So. Wouldn't it make sense to have something in there just overseas, um?
I think I'm the personnel, but that.
But. And Kathy, are you trying to say the more of a physical plant oversight than a staffing?
In, in this particular case, because of the space that we have, yes, that's, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I kind of, that's what I thought you meant, so it would be more of a physical plant.
Right.
Organizational ability, which would include helping the staff to work through it, but.
Right.
Oversight of the entire inside of the library.
Right.
So what might some of the, what might that look like, if we were to say, we're gonna look at Darcy's organizational skills around
Physical.
The physical plant, what would we be looking for, like what would Darcy be demonstrating, like, she reaches out to Steve when there's a problem, or she um discusses regularly with staff?
Delegation skills?
Delegation.
I, I think, that, that, that points out something uh we, we have to be aware of, we're the board of trustees, and we don't sit in the library every single day. So, there are a lot of things that we're just not gonna know, and that's not a, not a problem, but I, I, I think when I look at this form, if you checked on, I don't know, not applicable, uh, then we, if we get a lot of those, we say, uh-oh, as a board, we gotta do something be, to become more aware of what's going on.
Right.
Good point.
And there's something wrong with that.
That would let us know that Darcy was demonstrating these organizational skills, like how would that, what would that look like for the plant? Do you know what I mean, the physical space?
Very valid question.
No, like I could walk in here and say, oh, it looks pretty, you know, everything looks pretty good, so, you know.
And then, of course, Bergen and Matt did that, so.
Yeah, but, but as, but as the director, you're sort of overseeing.
I, so, whatever.
You okay?
I came in, I said, oh, it looks great, and I knew that they were going to do it.
It's still reflective of your leadership.
But, yes.
Yeah, but that's a staff thing.
Darcy, Darcy is responsible for it, but the two assistants implemented do it at her direction, or with her approval.
Right, so how are we rating Darcy, though, if, if the space looks good?
No, we don't, that, I don't think that's appropriate. Because we, there's very limited choice with the space, and I think the staff makes good choices, and Darcy's in charge of the staff. I don't see how making her more responsible than that is appropriate or necessary.
Mm-hmm. I don't think it's making her more responsible, uh, I think it's.
If you put it on her evaluation, you're making it more her responsibility.
Well, Kathy, maybe you can explain to us a, a little bit more what you want the evaluation form to, to say.
Well, I don't know, I was kind of putting it out there to see what people came up with. I mean, all spaces that, that patrons can see.
No.
Well, I would throw out that Darcy reached out to MLS, and we. Christine coming in, and we did an evaluation, bingo, she met that requirement.
And that can only be a high mark, uh, under an organizational skill.
Right, yeah, so.
Maybe for next meeting, because we're gonna discuss this one more time, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Jane, we could maybe look at some other forms and see how they address it.
Good idea.
I like that idea.
This isn't set stone yet, right?
No.
We're still, we're still.
That's why we didn't put Darcy's goals in there.
We could sit here all night and be confused to know what we want to say, or what you want to say.
What do you think about that, Kathy?
Kathy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Lee.
That we, that, uh, when we, next time, next, when we meet next month, talk with more concrete examples of what you want to see. With, this is, we're not, the form is not all solid now, we're still working on it.
Right, we have time.
We have time, and it's, it's good to think these things through, and I think this can probably only result in higher marks for Darcy. And I think that's important, because that's a big part in a small library.
Yeah, just think about how you want to word it, Kathy. For next time, you know.
Am I allowed to comment on this?
Yeah.
Then we can. I don't, I don't know if this is where you're going, Kathy, but let's say it was the opposite, let's say I approached Darcy and said, we want to move this around, and she said no, or she let things fall into, maybe you could say something like ensures spaces used appropriately, and uh, something like that. The opposite, that's what I'm saying.
That's a good point.
You are allowing us to make.
That's a good point.
Thinking things through and looking at data for us to do that, but somehow phrasing that in there, that.
Yeah.
If you had to.
That's a good point.
Are not doing that and looking at those things, you would, you would initiate that.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that leaves room for the delegation part, yeah.
Be an historical nerd. When they wrote the constitution, and we're designing the presidency, they were thinking of George Washington at the time. They weren't thinking of other people that followed, like Donald Trump, for example. So, when we, when we're doing this, Darcy, we love Darcy, which is not gonna be here forever.
You don't know that, too.
You don't know that.
I thought you called me forty-two, and I was like, not yet.
Don't start that.
The thing is, we're, we're making this form for any director that we have, not just necessarily Darcy. Thanks, that was, I think Bergen made a good point, so, there's my historical nerd that came up, so that's what I think.
You want to make sure your director, whoever it is.
Yes.
Is ensuring the spaces you, being used to its best capacity.
Yes.
Whether or not.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
I, I got that on the way.
That's exactly it.
That's exactly.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you get that?
Most. We're gonna talk about my organizational skills next, so.
Or is it really organizational skills then, if you go that?
Right.
Definition.
Yeah.
So, think about that, Kathy, if that's what.
Yeah, you can add a space next time.
I, I think it, it's worth thinking about, um, until we meet again, and, and looking up
Yeah.
Some ways, but I think that that's a, a very good way to approach it.
Okay.
Oh, do we have a motion to continue discussion for, at next meeting?
Oh, I thought it was there anyway, but um, I make a motion to continue uh discussing the director's evaluation form for our next meeting. A second.
Seconded by Jan.
Okay, any discussion? Jan?
Uh, yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jay?
He's gone.
Mary Lou.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Good. Old, other old business. Uh, and a couple meetings ago, someone had mentioned that uh, uh, we lose track of, track of items, and unless we have them in the, on the agenda. And I just thought of three off the bu, off the top, that we should carry as holdovers on our agenda. One of them is establish a list of library terms, I think we mentioned that in the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do that.
And why do I feel that nothing is, nothing has been done to this point, which is fine.
That's, thank you for the reminder.
Uh, we also had training of new and current trustee members. Uh, we didn't.
Yes, Laurel and I have, both had different things going on, we haven't gotten together, but we'll have it together for the next meeting.
Right, all I'm saying is, we don't, don't want to lose track of these things.
No, I, I understand.
And at this meeting, Jan brought up uh, a question about a balance of an account. And so, we should have a balance of the various accounts that we're dealing with, for example, state aid is one of them.
Yep. I'm hoping I'll be able to have that before September, it really depends on the town accountant, and the, when we switch to a new fiscal year, the special accounts have to be I don't know exactly what happens, but they have to be brought forward to the new fiscal year, it, it doesn't work the same as the operating.
And it usually takes a couple of months for that to happen, Darcy.
Yeah.
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 And that's no problem.
Those will, like, once. Yeah, but once I do have those, I will be including those in the variance reports, I, I always would provide the special account reports with my report every month.
And another thing we need to track, that when you had asked me, Bob, to go through the old minutes for the timeline of the um.
Archives.
Ar- archives, as I'm sitting there reading all the old minutes that I find. The Ryan Reardon room and money, for those of you who were there at the time. I don't, who Kathy was, I know, and I think maybe were you?
I was.
Yeah, whatever happened, was the money, whatever happens, we may fall apart.
That money was held by the the group that started that.
Um, I have access to it. It's in TD Bank, I will contact TD Bank and see.
That's money that can be used with that room, or do they have to decide?
How they, no, they don't have to decide, and actually Sean didn't wanna be involved anymore, so.
Right.
So an update for people who were not around for the Ryans. Ryan Reardon Room, which is the name of the children's room. A group of te- Ryan Reardon was a young man, young boy in town who um very avid reader, very well loved, he died of some type of cancer, I don't know what type. But some teachers from Bagnell School came to the trustees a number of years ago. Said they were doing fundraising and because he was such an avid reader, they would like to name, have that dedicated a name, there's a plaque they made, and they wanted to donate some of the money that they had fundraised to add to the children's room. And at the time, all that really got done, as far as I can see, was the plaque and the ceremony to give the plaque. And there's.
I think there were uh some computer path or.
Were there?
Something.
I don't have anything else anymore information or minutes, and it's like, that's money that could be used now.
Over and above the allotment of the grant.
No, it was pretty much just the sign.
They did get a bookcase or something maybe, or the bean.
Oh, yes, the bean bags and one, one bookshelf. And that ended up in here and switched with one that. They got switched, uh they're both.
I mean, they came to us to approve it and we said yes, and then it, we never really know, there was no follow through here. So that might.
I'll see what the balance is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we had to contact that group, if it's still in existence, or if the mother, Ryan's mother is involved still. Cause I know the tea, I don't even know if the teachers are still at Bagnell.
Are we talking a lot of money this time?
No, it's like two thousand, between two and three.
That could be something that over and above what Bergen needs, that would be a a plus.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, really.
Yes.
And we can even put Ryan's name on it, I mean, you know, donate a box.
Yeah.
Or whatever. I ju- I mean, this was just something I saw in the minutes, I'm, wow, whatever happened to, you know, to think that was three years ago. So um, yeah, and that was another thing to not let fall by the wayside. And then I just said to Jenny, I said, oh, in the tree, she's, oh, it's been taken care of, so.
Yeah, so, so um I I emailed Randy. Oh, and he said he would look at it, and then Monday I came and it was gone, so the tree has been taken down.
The dead tree.
The dead tree, I haven't heard from him about a replacement tree. Um, but I I think it'd be nice to put a new tree in, which I'd be happy to donate some money toward. This, it's kind of a big gap there, but I, he hasn't talked to me about his thoughts on the replacement.
The soil has some.
Exactly, I don't, I don't think so, but um I wanna get more information from him about replacement.
I was all set to say, we have a dead tree.
Yeah.
I saw the stone.
And you'd really want an oborus to plant something like that.
Yes, I'm sorry, what, Kathy?
I probably want an oborus to to plant something like that.
Make this adjustment.
Yeah, or you know, a smaller tree can be done, not that.
A small tree, yeah. I have something that's gone on for a long time and um initially, I think Mary Lou I had received notification that under the will and trust of Gerard Tibbetts. There was a portion uh allotted to the library and that it would be the, the trust was done in percentages, so it would be uh a certain percentage would come to the library. It's been a couple of years. And uh we haven't heard anything further. And I really think that it's time, it's a local uh dress lawyer, uh gentleman from Groveland who is handling it and uh his name is Beaton, uh from the Beaton family here in Groveland. And I think that it would be a good time to get in touch and see if there's been any action on that. I have no idea what the amount is. Um, but I think we should follow up on it since there's been absolutely no follow up on it. Maybe Mary Lou and I could get together and and approach uh the attorney. Um, I still have the letter.
I was just looking in my file to, I know I have it, I I would never have gotten rid of it. It's in here somewhere, that letter, but I'd have to, I'd have to um find it, I don't know exactly where I put it. But.
Oh, we don't have to do it tomorrow, but possibly, you know, within the next couple of weeks to just to inquire about the status.
Yeah, I I I remember getting that letter and I, and I know I have it here somewhere, but exactly where? I don't, I just don't remember where I put it. And I will find it. I don't think it's a couple of years, well, maybe more like a year, maybe.
I'm guessing it's two years, but you know, the time.
Two years, okay, maybe, but um. Okay, but it's, I have it someplace in here, but I'll have to.
I don't remember.
That was a dress lawyer from Havel, I believe it's Terry Beaton, yeah.
And I remember talking about it at some point.
Yeah.
At the meeting, but.
It was a percentage after other percentages had been distributed, but and so there was no dollar amount. But certainly, if it's coming to the library, I'd like to know about it.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it later, Mary Lou, and then.
Yeah, I have to, I'm gonna have to um
Contact him.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll find it, it's in here somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll get back to us next meeting?
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda, hopefully I'll be able to find it, if I can, well. But it's, I know.
But we know how to get, who we know who to get in touch with, so.
There's no way I would have thrown that out, I mean, I don't throw, I mean, you know, and I, so it's in here someplace, I just have to find it, that's all.
Right.
All right.
Not a problem.
All right.
Any other old business that people wanna add at this point? How about other business? Okay, for uh next meeting, which is what, September thirteenth? Uh, I'm gonna put on the agenda the director's evaluation form. And I would also like to put on a review of the strategic plan. Uh, I think it's time to review it, cause some of those items are uh set to complete in fiscal year twenty-four, which is, I believe, we're already in. Are we good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Any comments from the audience? I don't think we have anyone online that's not a board member. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I just had one thing, if there's some way, Darcy, if you could look through the files and see if you could find the directions. It was quite a size booklet for the um putting together of that mobile shelving that's in the cellar, that would be a big help.
I'll try, yeah, I'll try to find.
Yeah, I know it's hard to find, it wasn't all that long ago, so hopefully it exists.
Was it taking a problem with the selling?
Yes.
But I can't picture.
You know where it was purchased from. That, if the company's still around, they might have the um instructions right at the get going.
It was a very popular company with library furniture and shelving, I can't think of the name of it. But it was, it was pretty um popular, it was a large company. So it, we've got to be able to find it. It would be a waste not to use it.
I'm not, I'm not against it, I just can't picture it, uh yeah, I just need to know what I'm dealing with, because as you know, I don't have more space to fill up.
Right.
And figure things, so.
But I mean, when it's reconfigured, it might be something useful to you, it might not be.
Absolutely.
But it's worth looking at.
I agree, and just again, just, uh, you know, I have looked at it twice with Steve, I, it's just in pieces, so I have.
What a shame, what a shame.
Yeah, it's it's an opportune time to look at it, we're gonna go through a major floor plan change, so.
Right.
Okay, guys, it's getting late, do I have a motion to?
Make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-two PM.
I have a second?
Second from Jen.
Okay, my checklist is getting long. Jan?
Uh, yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Juan.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, in a final yes?
Adjourned, I'm gonna stop recording.